Astros!
Astros!
One, two, one, two, three, four!
Astros!
Now, one, two, one, two, three, four!
Hey!
One, two, three, four!
Astros!
Now!
London! Up!
L D A!
Let's give it up for the amazing Fragrant Douglas Astros marching band. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. The executive session has ended. But before we resume our regular meeting of the Atlanta Board of Education, we would like to, well, you know, hold on, one second here. Just wanted to let everyone know that the fresh off their success, the marching band showcase will feature Douglas High School, the dub, D-Dub classic on October 27th alongside of South Atlanta, Mays, Benjamin E. Mays, and Maynard Jackson High School proudly representing Atlanta Public Schools and its metro Atlanta celebration of music. So, we just heard from the Fragrant Douglas Band. Now, we will go on to the recognitions. So, each month, board members have the opportunity to recognize individuals or groups who are making meaningful impact across the district. These recognitions are led by board members and reflects our commitment to celebrating advocacy, excellence, and service throughout the APS community. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Vice Chair Jennifer McDonough for her recognition.
Great, thank you. Hot mic, I like it. And we like to start a celebration with that kind of performance, so thank you to that amazing band. If I asked any of you to name a favorite teacher, you could not only do so quickly, but you would definitely be happy to do so because you think about all the people that influenced your life outside of your family, and our teachers play an absolutely critical role, one that we knew far more even magnified in 2020 when our teachers were asked to work in conditions that were so new to all of us, and they did so so graciously every single day. It is my honor to recognize a teacher in the North Atlanta cluster tonight, and I would like Mindy to come up here and join me. So, Mindy Little has been teaching for 24 years. She's 16 years at Morris Brandon, three years at Sarah Smith with the Cutie Kindergarteners, and then four years at DeKalb, and now she is a student specialist support system because we know that the kids, in addition to their academics, there's a huge world of need that some of our kids have, which people like Mindy work every single day to surround them so they have it. I know Mindy also from North Atlanta High School because she's also in North Atlanta. She's a Dubs mom, just like me. My son Luke made the freshman, he made the varsity football team as a freshman, and Mindy and Steve's son Jackson was also on that team. And what I learned about varsity football as a mom of a freshman is that you spend most of the games hoping they never go in because high school football is very different than middle school football. But Mindy was so gracious, there's a lot to learn when you're a new mom on the block, and Mindy was great. And I want to extend that out even further when we had a good friend who was going to college and maybe didn't know as many people at the college he was going to, and Mindy's son happens to go to that school as well, so Mindy immediately offered to, you know, reach out and get the boys connected. So, I just think that having that heart and having that care and caring about people's experience is a job that Mindy takes not only very seriously every single day at Morris Brandon, but she takes seriously in the rest of her life. I also want to read a note from the principal at Morris Brandon, Jay Bland. "We are proud to recognize Mindy Little for her outstanding contributions to our school and cluster community. When I first arrived, Mindy was a third grade teacher eager to learn and grow. Realizing her goal to grow, she quickly pursued graduate studies and joined the APS Leadership Development Program, which prepared her for her current role as our MTSS Specialist. At a school of over 900 students across two campuses, Mindy has been invaluable to both staff and students, leading SST, behavior, attendance, and academic supports while helping our heart earn beating the odds recognition in 2024. She was honored at the APS MTSS Staff of the Year for Elementary Schools and as Morris Brandon's Support Professional of the Year in 2023. Beyond her role, she is a proud North Atlanta cluster parent who consistently advocates for our cluster schools. She also plays a critical role in mentoring and supporting new teachers and staff, including working alongside and guiding our new MTSS Specialist. Today, Mindy continues to excel, always seeking ways to better support students and staff at Morris Brandon Elementary School." And I want to say, I think the most important thing I've learned about people like you, there is love and light and leadership that these kids need every day, and the people who show up every day to deliver them are noteworthy and noticeable, and we could not be more lucky to have you, and we're so grateful for you. So, with that, on behalf of the Board of Education, I have a shiny plaque and a spectacular band performance. But Mindy, thank you for everything you do. Your commitment is really phenomenal. It's picture time now, too. So, we will have, we're going to stand behind the ferns.
Congratulations again. Quickly, I want to make two brief announcements and one important recognition. I believe Greg Goodwin and maybe some of his team is here, I saw, yeah, back in the back. So, they started a student athlete of the month for young men, a young man and a young woman, and Chick-fil-A BSN, and I believe Sharp Realtors. Sharp Realtors may be here today, but they're in the room. Thank you all for that work. Thank you very, very much for being here. Also, another really brief announcement before I get to the recognition. I'm thrilled to announce that this Thursday morning, October 9th, we'll officially launch a new partnership between the Atlanta Public Schools and, I won't say your Atlanta Braves like it's written here, it's our Atlanta Braves. I'm 100% a Braves fan. We're excited to unveil initiative that will positively impact our athletics program, our baseball and softball facilities, and hundreds of student athletes. Stay tuned for more details later this week, but we're extremely excited about the partnership and the work that's happening in athletics. Okay, so for a very, very important group of people, it's my privilege to recognize a group of individuals who are often the unsung heroes. There's a script, but I don't do good on scripts. So, there's two groups that I firmly believe in going to see when I visit a school. I'm obviously going to classrooms, walking with the principal, but there's two other groups that are really, really important, I know, to making the school go. I don't usually get to see a bus driver because it's during the school day, but the custodians and the school nutrition workers are two places that unequivocally I'm going to stop before I exit that building. And today, because it's things you don't often think about that ultimately makes such a significant difference in the environment that our students feel when they come into a clean building that they know somebody has taken pride in and what it actually does for them, it is significant. So, this is on October 2nd, it was National Custodians. So, this is, on October 2nd, was National Custodian Day, and I believe I had, I was at, was I at West Manor last week? I was at West Manor, and I messed, I messed with, I messed with the team because they didn't have, they didn't have the spray. But, our custodians go above and beyond to ensure that our schools are clean, they're safe, they're welcoming learning environments, and their work sets the stage for teaching and learning to take place. So, thank you for all that you do. We want to recognize you. We've got so many of you here with us in the room. I want to recognize outstanding custodian from Continental Colony Elementary, Ms. Mako Bemery. From West Manor, Michelle Brown. Also, from West Manor, Fay Kane. From Benteen, Maurice Champion. From Cleveland Avenue, Chanel Charles. From Douglas High School, Alan Cooper. From Benteen Elementary, Deshuse Cunningham. From FL Stanton, Portia Karadon. From Hank Aaron New Beginnings, Chiquila Frazier. From Springdale Park, Chandler Freeman. From North Atlanta High School, Mark Josie. From Washington High School, Michael Lee. From Miles Elementary, Jerry Little. From Washington High School, DeAndre Mosley. From Douglas High School, Sheena Mitchell. From Carver Early College, Alex Patterson. From FL Stanton, Cornell Anafrey. From Hank Aaron, Gwendolyn Owens. Continental Colony, Larry Ramsey. From Douglas High School, Modestine Reeves. Also, from Douglas High School, Shanqueesia Stevens. From LP Miles, Errol Strozier. From the Student and Family Hub, Kimberly Tanner. From Washington High, Patricia Tinsley. And also, from Washington High, Eric Tuggle. Thank you, sir. Yeah, we're done.
This concludes our recognitions. I will now turn it over to Mr. Wilbon for a public comment.
Good evening and welcome to the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. In just a few moments, the board will begin hearing from those who signed up to speak by 5:50 PM. The board welcomes your comments, but before we get started, please take note of the following guidelines on how public comment is conducted. The board has allocated one hour for public comment, and each speaker will only be allowed to speak once for a total of two minutes. The board may elect to hear community comments in any order or sequence and is not limited by the order of sign-up sheets. All speakers presenting highly detailed information are asked to put their comments in writing, and comment cards are available for those wishing to do so. In order to maintain meeting decorum, follow appropriate protocols, protect the confidentiality of students, and ensure impartiality, the board will not hear comments on matters involving individual students, parents, or the character, professional competence, or the physical or mental health of any individual. Also, the board will not hear public comment on personnel matters that specifically include the names or titles of employees. This includes, but is not limited to, contract non-renewals, position abolishment, the hiring and firing of staff, and investigating proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. Comments regarding personnel issues should be sent in writing to the Atlanta Board of Education, 130 Trinity Avenue, Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia, 30303, or via email at Finally, in order to maintain meeting decorum and to ensure all comments can be heard by the board, applause, cheering, cheering, or speech that defaints individuals or disrupts the meeting should be refrained from and may be, may be caused for removal or adjournment of the meeting and suspension from attending future Atlanta Board of Education events, hearings, meetings, and other proceedings. With that being said, I'd like to call the first three speakers to the podium, Ms. Isabella York, Crystal Jeffrey, and Ebony Tolbert.
Hello. Good evening to the Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Johnson. Oh, good, the time clock started. My name's Isabel York, and I'm a parent of two young children at Warrantee Jackson Elementary. Last month, I came and shared about how much Jackson means to our family and our neighborhood. We love our school, and it's working for our children. We remain deeply invested in keeping Jackson the wonderful choice it has always been. I understand the scenarios for North Atlanta schools have been revised, and I want to sincerely, sincerely thank you for listening, for hearing the voices of our Jackson community, and for recognizing how much our school matters. We truly appreciate your thoughtful consideration of these complex decisions and keeping our perspective in mind. However, Jackson is still impacted by the proposals for consolidation of our dual campus, and regarding this, I have two requests. First, please consider, continue to consider no changes to Jackson. In every conversation with board members and our superintendent, our school has been called a shining star, a high-performing, low-operating-cost model in APS. Families across our community see our dual campus structure as one of the best public school experiences in Atlanta, a true alternative to private education. Our children should not have to give up something that's beneficial to their educational experience. Why change something that's working so well when there are so many other urgent challenges across the district? Second, if all options have been considered and consolidation must move forward, please commit to keeping our primary campus for APS use only, not for private charter or long-term leases. As you know, Jackson lost 200 students when APS stayed closed during COVID, but our community has worked so hard to rebuild our enrollment from early learning onwards. Our kids are coming back, and we will need that building again, likely sooner than you think. Thank you for keeping our children's outcomes at the center of your decisions. We are proud to be an APS family, and we're simply asking that you continue to support our families at Jackson, too. Thank you.
Crystal Jeffrey, Jeffrey, excuse me.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. I am Crystal Jeffrey, Secretary-Treasurer of APSME, Georgia. I am here to call foul on the APS hearing process, which is getting progressively worse. APS process is as best described as a scam, with contracts being awarded to attorney friends to sit as objective hearing officers. Because the board accords the recommendation of the hearing officer, a strong presumption of correctness, you should ensure the hearings are fair and impartial, but they are not. APS employees appeal hearings, don't even pretend to be fair, and the Office of Employee Relations don't even pretend to conduct real, fair, or objective investigations. Hearing officers follow the script and direction of the APS representative. After all, they know who picked them to serve as the judge, and if they don't follow the cue of the APS representative, they will not likely be selected again. They'll lose their substantial fee for conducting a sham hearing and writing a sham report. We don't complain about the hearing process in other jurisdictions because they are fair. Allow for an employee to choose a representative of their own, cross-examine witnesses, and ensuring hearing officer came from an impartial pool. When the changes, with the changes in HR and some of the recent shenanigans, it's time for APS Board and Superintendent to review your hearing process and how the insider attorneys are being awarded these lucrative contracts to carry the dirty water of some of your rogue managers. Not all employees deserve to win their appeal, but they do deserve a fair and impartial hearing. I will be following and riding with some plain, flagrant violation within the hearing process. Employees and this board deserve a fair process. Thank you.
Ebony Tolbert.
Good evening, Board. My name is Ebony Tolbert, and I'm actually speaking as a parent who had a student that was a Thermo Fisher recipient. Coming to you because I've been trying to reach, basically talked to someone in the Science Department since April. After we found out my son had won the Thermo Fisher Award, which was back in February, we kind of lost communication with the district, and so I come to you today because I've been trying to reach someone in APS just to kind of, to give our feedback, my husband and I's feedback, on my son placing for two years at the state and then a couple, one time at the district. So, pretty much here today to see if I can get acknowledgement from this, from the actual district. I've sent several emails to different people, the Science Department, and just different people, one person on the board, just trying to really get heard, really trying to help the district when it comes to the science fair, and just basically seeing what we have seen at the district level, how my husband and I can have some feedback. And so, I've been waiting since, pretty much since April, I started sending emails. I sent another email in August, and I have yet to hear from anybody. So, at this point, with us having a son who has placed in the state fair twice, I would love to be able to, you know, as parents who can actually say we've been to the state, who can maybe help other parents, that's why I'm here today. We really want to be able to give our feedback to help other families. Not only that, we never, my son never had a chance to, to get all his stuff in because we were kind of lost. I felt like we were uneducated when it came to the Thermo Fisher Award, and so my initial reaching out to the district was because we were confused on how to even go about and make sure that he gets all his information, and our leadership had no idea about it. So, it was just a lot of miscommunication. And so, as parents who have had a child, you know, to place a couple of times, I felt like we should have had more communication from the district. Thank you.
The next three speakers, please kindly come in this order, Carrie Gibson, Charlotte Gibson, and Jenny Perry. Please come in that order.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Gibson. My daughter Charlotte, who you'll hear from in a minute, is a former APS student from pre-K through fifth grade. We're speaking tonight on the development of the Cone Art and Design Middle School, and hope so you guys will consider funding and the story she has, as you consider funding that school. Charlotte was a very good student at BPA. She has done everything from being an IB Ambassador to working with Girl Scouts, to every drama production you can think of. She did very well at BPA, ate all As and Bs all the time. However, we discovered very early on that Charlotte was gifted in the area of art, and she struggled every day to get through her time at Burgess. She had exceptional support from Mr. White and all of the teachers there. She had support first through fourth grade in everything from reading to math to get her just through the day. She hated things like sight words, math facts. Every day was a struggle, literal tears every day, but we made it. And as we approached middle school, we knew we had to do something different. We ultimately decided to leave APS and move over to DeKalb County so she could attend DeKalb School of the Arts to try to see if having that arts background and focus could help her. I'm proud to report she is excelling at DeKalb School of the Arts. She actually is doing well academically, socially, everything you can think of. Just recently, we did receive a letter from the school that her MAPS scores had increased so much that she qualified for gifted testing. So, just wanted to share that story and how proud we are to be from Atlanta and part of this community, and just really hope that you guys will consider putting funding behind that school to help kids who are like Char, whether it's gifted or otherwise, just giving them a different way to learn and grow because we think it's much needed. So, thank you.
Hello. My name is Charlotte Gibson. I was a student at APS but moved to DeKalb Arts Academy. I love being, I love the school I'm at, where I can meet other students, interest, who have the same interests and creative minds and learn like me. My school focuses on the arts, not just visual arts, but dance, music, and drama. Every day, I study visual arts and fine art, along with doing the same subjects other middle school students do. Most of our teachers in my grade are gifted certified teachers, which helps target our learning differences and perspectives, since some of us learn differently than other kids our age. I believe APS schools should have a school like the school I attend for kids now, who may not be able to access schools in various parts of town. Having a school where kids can learn different, learn in different ways and have opportunities to do things that are, that they are passionate about, or allow them to go down paths that they enjoy doing in the real world. This will allow them to expand their skills that they may or may not already have. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jenny Perry, and I'm a Sutton Middle School and Morris Brandon Elementary School parent. First, I'd like to say that I appreciate the administration for taking feedback from our community and reversing course from the initial North Atlanta cluster scenarios. We hope the updated scenario is the plan for Sutton and Brandon that is voted on in December. I also want to thank the board members who have taken the time to speak with me personally and/or meet with our community members over the last several weeks. While our cluster community has seen some of what we hoped to be accomplished, I can't shake the feeling that there was more to be done. I've had numerous conversations with parents across our entire district, both north and south in the last month, and the overarching theme I've realized from these discussions is that we all want one simple thing, a steady and satisfactory education for our children. That leads me to my message for the board today. We, as a district, are craving consistency, best practices, and unity. Consistency in the ability to send our children to our local schools and our local neighborhoods without frequent uncertainty. Best practices in our core curriculum and learning supplements to provide measurable outcomes while also eliminating wasteful spending on programs that don't produce results. Our kids need to be reading proficiently, and that needs to be the top priority. Unity in your messaging when speaking with all clusters. Division is something we all see every single day in our lives across many avenues. The last thing any of us need is more division in our life, particularly in our children's schooling. Please encourage collaboration across the district and clusters and finding common ground. Building on these commonalities will only strengthen our district. In the coming months, I hope to be part of the solution to strengthening the bonds between clusters and across the district. The strength of our local schools has a direct impact on the outcomes of our children's futures and I hope we can work together to find solutions to meet, excuse me, to meet our children's needs. Thank you.
The next three speakers, Arneisha Dobbs, Gloria Pritchett, and Kimberly Dukes. Please come in that order. Ms. Dukes, it's going to be Ms. Dobbs first.
Hello, Board. Dr. Johnson, everyone. I just come on behalf of the parents that I kind of serve right now. I have parents that have very exceptional needs. I have had facilitated meetings with these parents and one of them did get results. And those results are the same things that we asked for the audit about. They're still live and present. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. But they are not implementing IEPs. We have teachers that are not trained to even touch or even read an IEP that are writing them, getting reprimanded for doing so, even though leadership is getting promoted. I have kids at North Atlanta with copy and paste IEPs. They are popping up again. No entry meetings on these GNet babies that came into traditional spaces. No one has a plan for them. That's a lot of suspensions that you're seeing. Your SROs don't know how to deal with them, so they lock them up or, you know, it's detrimental instead of trying to find the issue. You can do FBAs on these problem kids, if that's what you want to call them. But they just not used to being stuck in a box. And we have not yet found out how to deal or how to interact with them. If you don't know about this child when they come into your building and you know they have an IEP, I would suggest teachers read them. You might find that you can, you can meet these problems before they even happen. Thank you.
Ms. Gloria Pritchett. Then you, Ms. Dukes.
Good evening, everyone. Today is National Coaches Day, so I will ask each of you to reach out and thank a coach or mentor that is helping, helped to be responsible for you being where you are today. And I know that you had some. I'm here today to advocate for the Lakewood Project. We're asking that you approve the naming of the Lakewood Track and Field, the Coach Gus Pritchett Track and Field. Coach Pritchett has coached and mentored over hundreds of youth in the Atlanta community for over 50 years. Now at the age of 80, he's still serving in the community, still serving youth, still coaching, and he's also a legendary starter for APS track meets. He founded the Mercury Youth Organization back in 1972 and it still exists today as a nonprofit. He has coached at Clark College, he coached the men, and they, for the first time ever, when he coached them back in the nineties, they earned conference titles. He also coached women's track at the Bennett Uni, Bennett College. He has lived in the community for 57 years. We live three, he's my husband, we live three miles from the Lakewood Stadium. He was educated in APS. He's been married 59 years, has three children, seven grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. We're asking that you please consider this request to honor someone who has certainly earned such, such an award. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Dr. Johnson, Board members and community. We're coming to you about safety and security. APS creates its own police department in 2016. While the district says this support at risk students, the student handbook does not explain when school-based incidents trigger police involvement. With over 100 officers, the largest school police force in Georgia, we need transparency to keep students out of the school-to-prison pipeline. We are calling for the APS Student Handbook to include clear guidelines by May 2026. To learn more about the campaign and the petition, you guys can go to atlantathrive.org. But during the 2024-2025 school year, we led the Don't Disability Campaign and we noticed that our exceptionally students were misunderstood and had been reported as having more incidents with SROs, which we believe is a large part of a lack to the training on the 14 different categories of special education. Dr. Johnson and Chief Appleton, we want to say thank you for providing the annual SRO training and we look forward to the upcoming interactive training with Thrive Parents. Lastly, but definitely like least, parents, grandparents, and community members, we would love for you guys to join us to share your stories around Atlanta Public Schools, meaning the good, the bad, and the ugly. We're hosting house meetings in person and virtual. The house meeting in person is October 25th, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 at Parkson Park Rec Center. The virtual one is held on November 15th from 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. We're also hosting a school in the candidates and we would love for you guys to join us so that you know what the community wants from you. And Nisha did not get to share her data, but I will. To date, we have did 64 IEP meetings since school has started. We've hosted six facilitated meetings and have two, they give us evidence or like the feedback on two of those meetings. And so we want to be able to work with the district to ensure our special needs students are okay as well. Thank you.
Our last two speakers for the evening are Nathaniel Dyer and Brianna Floyd. Please come in that order.
First of all, I say, you did not listen to the community. You kept moving ahead with your plan. One plan is keep Hollis a K through five, which has no feeder. So that's going to put us in a situation where we have to revisit closure. And then you want to maintain the situation the way it is at K through eight. And you still have two middle schools. You have Russell and Hollis. We propose Hollis be the middle school of choice, has all their amenities, accessibility to aquarium, Coke, Civil Human Rights Museum, being in development. But you want to move the children to Russell in the West End, which that's already starving. And it's already inundated by 11 charter schools pulling about 5,000 kids out of the Washington Cluster. You and HPM have this narrative that small schools are a bad thing. Why don't you flip it and look at it as an opportunity to create a private school atmosphere for those students? It has everything that private schools look for, small schools, student teacher ratio. But you know what? Public schools do not have, parents do not have their $20,000 tag attached to their children's education. Why not think outside the box? Development is growing around the Washington Cluster. You had Frederick Douglass students in here, brilliant young people, and you do the same thing to them. You know, this mayor, who I consider a clown, comes out talking about the tale of two cities, where he helped create it, Courtney English as well, and that's what you're doing. Expansion on one side of town and shrinkage on the other. Now you tell me many times, Superintendent, that, hey, you're a grown man. Well, I tell you what, stop being a doo-wopper developers and do right by our children. Thank you.
Good evening. In addition to National Coaches Day, it's also Child Health Day. It's not every year that those two observances fall on the same day, but this year they did. My name is Brianna Floyd. I'm a former coach with Atlanta Youth Rugby and the current CFO for Georgia Cyro, which is a state youth rugby organization. I am taking up the charge of starting an Atlanta affiliate of Urban Rugby America. And I just wanted to come here today to really share visibility and awareness. In my experience, I know that we can scale quickly if I start from the top down. If I could just share a little story as to what my why is to help illustrate why I'm seeking to partner with APS Schools. I was introduced to rugby at Dartmouth College where I was a student as a member of the class of 2009. By 2015, women's rugby at Dartmouth had become a varsity sport, which simply meant they could now recruit and provide scholarships to athletes to play. There's a black female athlete by the name of Ariana Ramsey. She didn't start playing rugby until her sophomore year of high school. She started at Dartmouth in 2018 and by 2021, she was competing in what would be the first of two Olympics. She competed in Tokyo and then again in Paris where the women's team actually medaled. If you don't follow the sport, you may not know that the Men's Rugby World Cup is coming to America in 2031, followed by the Women's in 2033. We know that in advance of these types of global events, there is a wealth of opportunity, exposure, and dollars, if I'm being quite frank, that come with it. And I just believe that Atlanta's communities and schools and families should be the beneficiaries of some of that, what could possibly be the next big wave in sport. So what I'm leaving with each of you here today is a one-pager, where I've outlined my responsibilities as a person who will be scaling this program here in Atlanta, as well as opportunities where I feel the Board can support. And I also will be reaching out to each of you via email. I didn't want the emails to be cold. I know a warm email is much well-received. So thank you for your time and I look forward to continuing the conversation outside of this space.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Wilborn. Thank you to our community members for joining us this evening. We always appreciate your feedback and engagement. For stakeholders who are not able to attend the monthly meetings in person, the full Board meeting is available on our YouTube channel, ABOE TV, where you can access through the district website. Our commitment to providing accessibility resources that encourage and support meaningful stakeholder engagement.
There are no committee report outs and since our last Board meeting, Board Chair Mitchell, you attended two conferences. Can you give us a brief update from each?
Well, I'll start with the Council of Great City Schools. Had the opportunity to attend the, I'm sorry, not Council of Great City Schools, that's this month, the Council of Urban Boards of Education in Los Angeles, California. Had the opportunity to attend, I'm served on the Steering Committee where we advocate and develop policy models, resolutions for National School Board, National School Board Association. One of the things I would say was most impactful, the Council of Urban Boards of Education is now doing a, a, a program for student voice. So I had the opportunity to meet student representatives that sit on the Board as a, as a student voice for other school districts. And I'm glad that we are now in a process of putting in place a policy so we can have a school, a student on, a student to be able to sit on a part of our Board and learn our engagement and our civic engagement and all that great stuff, right? So with that being said, the students have an opportunity to come to the, we'll call it Q, but the Council of Urban Boards of Education to participate in sessions, be able to speak with different Board members and talk about what impacts them in school. And they're able to, and if we have a representative, they're able to see the collective's voice from a national standpoint. Also, we had a lot of different learning opportunities, professional development sessions during the conference, which was very impactful, especially around policy, the current state of our country right now with federal funding, how is that going to impact school districts? Just a lot of different sessions that Board members can pick and choose. It was a great conference. I also had the opportunity to attend the Congressional Black Caucus Conference in Washington DC to learn about the legislative priorities for the African-American community, where there's housing, schools, medical. They had a, again, a lot of sessions where you can engage with a lot of different people and I think is, that was impactful. I do think the, it should be open for anyone to attend because you have an opportunity to learn what is impacting African-American community nationwide. So that was impactful too.
Great, thank you. Shivi Brooks, I think you also attended that. Give me quick updates.
Yeah, just echoing what Chair Mitchell stated, I had the opportunity to attend the Congressional Black Caucus Convention in Washington DC. A lot of good conversations around educator pipeline development, around youth civic engagement. That one was really, stood out to me. As a American government teacher, when we get to municipal government, it's like a blip in the entire curriculum. And then we look at elections like the one we have coming up next month where it's pretty much all municipal, and then we go, why does voter turnout fall in comparison to presidential years? And I gleamed from that, a lot of opportunity on the district and administrative side to start, you know, thinking about what does civic education look like for our kids and how can we elevate municipal and Atlanta-specific curricula, if you will, into what we're teaching our kids so that our kids know that you have a Board of nine members or what your city council's powers are, what a weak mayor, strong mayor system is, and what we have and that kind of thing. So it was just a lot of good, I think emphasis on that. And lastly, just a lot of candid conversations about the state of public education funding and some concerns that, that folks are having nationally. Definitely encourage my fellow Board members of all backgrounds to come out and attend next year. I think it's a really, really good opportunity for us to, I mean literally the whole of Atlanta is there, all the different government levels, so we can get good work done in one place. So, thank you.
Thanks.
This concludes my remarks. Dr. Johnson, we're ready to hear your remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to briefly recap the work session. Our first presentation was by Dr. Bradshaw and our Strategic Plan and Sustainability Initiatives. Our next presentation focused on caring for every child and working through culture and climate for Mr. Usher. We had a financial update as well from Dr. Bracken, as well as a presentation from Mr. Matt Sacks from HPM on facilities planning. I also take a moment to recognize that October is National Principals Month and it's a time to celebrate the great leadership that is throughout Atlanta Public Schools and Buildings. The 2025 APS Principal of the Year finalists have been named, Ms. Melanie Sotoli of Tuskegee Airman Global Academy, Dr. Jennifer Tony from Springdale Park Academy, and Mr. Yusuf Mohammed from Phoenix Academy. All are vying for Principal of the Year at the APS Awards. We also got a chance to recognize the finalists for staff as well as Teacher of the Year. So we look forward to those recognitions in November. Madam Chair, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Would you please present the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm pleased to submit the consent agenda items that are numbered 5.1 through 5.3D for your consideration and approval.
Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 5.1A through 5.3D?
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Second by Board Member Jessica Johnson. Ms. Barnett, would you please open the polls?
Log in.
Here's my disclaimer. If you haven't logged in, please do so at this moment.
Thank you. Now, we will move to discussion and action. The following items will be discussed. Monthly budget adjustment. Dr. Johnson, please present the items for discussion and action. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have a monthly budget adjustment recommendation. We have a small adjustment to the state award grants that will true up both revenue and expenditures to match the actual award. These adjustments impact the paraprofessional teacher grant and the FY '26 custodian supplement. We are bringing an increase of $259,000 from Title IV, 21st Century Community Learning Center grant for Usher Collier. And federal grants impact the general fund because we consolidate these dollars into the school allotments.
Is there a motion to approve the monthly budget adjustment action item?
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Second by Board Member Mauretta Baldwin. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Barnett, please open the polls.
Our second item is a request for approval of short-term tax anticipation note, which will provide the district with operating funds to manage cash flow while we wait to receive the property tax revenues. The proposed tan is in the amount of $30 million with First Citizens Bank serving as the lender. The note carries an interest rate of 3.6%, and will close on October 9th, 2025. This is a 60-day note with a repayment expected by December 8th, 2025. The estimated total interest cost for this short-term borrowing is approximately $180,000. Proceeds from the tan will ensure that the district can continue meeting normal payroll, instructional, and other operational obligations without interruption. Repayment will be made in full from local property tax revenue once they're collected later in the year. This financing structure has been reviewed by our financial advisors and bond counsel and represents a standard and responsible tool used by school districts to maintain financial stability during time differences between revenues and expenditures. At this time, we are requesting the board's consideration and approval to authorize the superintendent and chief financial officer to execute all necessary documents to issue the $30 million tax anticipation note with First Citizens Bank at a 3.6% interest.
Is there a motion to approve the tax anticipation note item, action item?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown. Second by Board Member Brooks. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Barnett, would you please open the polls? Thank you. Vice Chair McDonough?
7.1 is a resolution in celebration of National Walk and Rule to School Day. The resolution recognizes October 8th, 2025 as the 29th Annual National Walk and Rule to School Day, emphasizing the benefits of walking and biking to school for student health, safety, academic performance, and environmental sustainability. It highlights research showing that active transportation improves physical activity, mental well-being, and classroom engagement by also reducing pedestrian injuries, traffic congestion, and pollution. The board encourages schools, families, and community members to participate in this event and to support policies that expand safe, accessible routes for all students.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Board Member Pace. Second by Board Member Baldwin.
It's only right. No, we're even now. We're even now. We're even.
So, y'all confusing me with your boys. Okay, let me go back.
If I take off the hat, you're really in trouble.
That's true. Properly moved by Board Member Brooks. And second by Board Member Baldwin. Any discussion?
I'm looking forward to being with Burgess Peterson on Friday at 7:15. I mean, this, the idea though of, when you see all these parents come with their kids running to school and everyone's excited and a few different organizations are there, cities there giving out swag to kids. So, if you're not walking your kids to school, consider it. If you are doing it, keep up the good work because it's a great, it's a great way to build community in your school.
Park a couple blocks away and walk.
I'm with you on that.
And biking, sir.
Park a couple blocks away.
Skateboarding, lime, climbing. Are you biking? Oh, you're roller skating. I heard roller skating. Sounds great.
Ms. Barnett, would you open the polls? I apologize. Thank you. Madam General Counsel, does the board need to report out from executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair. The board needs to take action on five separate matters.
All right.
For the first matter.
Here we go.
May I have a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education accept the tribunal's findings of fact and recommendations dated August 13th, 2025 to non-renew Ms. Centina McHord's contract for employment?
Do I have a motion for the Atlanta Board of Education to accept the tribunal's findings of facts and recommendation dated August 13th, 2025 to non-renew Ms. Centina McHord's contract for employment?
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second by Brooks.
Second by Board Member Brooks. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you know, help you out.
Ms. Barnett, would you please open the polls?
Second item, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education accept the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations dated September 22nd, 2025 and demote Ms. Laquita Peters.
Is there a motion for the Atlanta Board of Education to accept the hearing officer's facts and findings and recommendation dated September 22nd, 2020, I'm sorry, 2025, and demote Ms. Laquita Pierce, Peters, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Second by Board Member Baldwin. Ms. Barnett, please open the polls.
For the third item, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education accept the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations dated October 1st, 2025 and demote Ms. Portia Martin.
Is there a motion for the Atlanta Board of Education to accept the hearing officer's facts and finding recommendation dated October 1st, 2025 to demote Ms. Portia Martin?
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Second by Board Member Baldwin. Ms. Barnett, would you please open the polls?
Our fourth item, in Student Appeal 2025-07, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations?
Is there a motion in Student Appeal 2025-07 for the Atlanta Board of Education to uphold the hearing officer's findings of facts and recommendations?
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Second by Board Member Mauretta Baldwin.
Yes, verbally yes.
What are you waiting for?
For our last item, in Student Appeal 2025-08, I request a motion that the Atlanta Board of Education uphold the hearing officer's findings of fact and recommendations?
Is there a motion in Student Appeal 2025-08 to uphold the hearing officer's findings and facts and recommendations?
So moved.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown.
Second.
Second by Board Member Mauretta Baldwin. Y'all tag teaming today. Tag teaming.
It's the OGs.
Yep.
The OGs. Not the seniors. The SCEs. Oh, didn't get mine? I'm a yes. I clicked it in close. It's glitchy.
The Special Revenue Report is a monthly report on grant budget adjustments and amended budgets. The Board Travel Report is a monthly report that details district-funded travel for board members and the board office, including the total year-to-date spending. The Construction Status Report is a monthly report on active construction projects that are primarily funded by the veteran-approved special purpose local option sales tax. Each of these reports can be found under the information tab in Simbali. We'd like to thank you for your participation, engagement, and support of Atlanta Public Schools. We look forward to engaging with you at our upcoming engagement opportunities. This is a reminder that our next two board meetings for this calendar year will be held on Wednesday, November 5th, and Wednesday, December 3rd. Have a great night.
Thank you. And before we end the meeting. One moment before.
Got to move to adjourn. That's all.
I would like to give Board Member Pace the opportunity for a little special acknowledgement.
I know, before we run out, while there's no official resolution recognizing this, I wanted to just take a quick moment, 60 seconds, to pause and honor October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so, for those who may have been impacted, who are a part of our staff, our alumni, any of our families wanted to acknowledge that, certainly those who are survivors as well. So, again, thank you for heightened awareness around this. Certainly spread the word, as always, wearing our pink and our pink ribbons and participating in 5Ks and other awareness opportunities as they become available. So, please acknowledge and celebrate this month. Certainly, we do, and we thank you for taking a moment to do that.
Thank you for sharing, Board Member Pace. And now, I would like to entertain the motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved by Board Member Briscoe Brown. Second by Board Member Mauretta Baldwin. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carry. Have a good night, everyone.